We didn't have that much rain today, so I don't think we're underwater in any part of the city. Um, let's see, Katie, do you think you can get the slides back up?
Hold on.
Oh, that's Jonathan. Lots of people on this. Well, Jonathan pulls it up. I want to again say thank you to Sam Nyman and Greg and Rachel and Justin. Thank you. It was a good thing you stuck around. We appreciate it. Sam Nyman deserves great thanks. He's the one who kept fiddling with PowerPoint as we kept changing things. I wanted to shout out Perry Rosenfeld, who works very closely with Maureen and her team on all things numbers and finances. Grateful for his help. The most of the thanks goes to Jonathan and Maureen, who year-round, the three of us work on financial matters, I would say, on a daily basis. Shout out to Katie Holden, the clerk, who is staffing us tonight. Thank you. And another thank you to Hattie Curwen Derrick, who helps us find true north over and over again. So, thank you. We are primarily here to listen. I'm going to run through some slides. We'll send you a copy of the slides tomorrow, so don't worry about writing anything down. I think you can primarily listen, certainly jot down questions, but mostly we're at the key point in the budget where we understand revenues quite well, and therefore we know how much we can expend. But if there are categories of investments that are of particular importance to each and every one of you, love to listen in here because there's still some malleability in what we bring forward. Next one. This will be familiar to you. As we know, all of us as partners in government, the process often matters. If you get the process wrong, you end up messing up the actual content. We try very hard to live up to these goals for ourselves, being inclusive and collaborative with across our departments and across the school committee and the city council, trying to make as much of the information as transparent and understandable as possible and hold ourselves accountable. The flexibility has been particularly important and will continue to be the world that keeps on changing and keeps throwing things at us. We try to be as responsive as we can, yes, to all of you, but as you can imagine, we hear from the residents and the businesses daily. We're trying to listen. Strategy matters. We do have big picture goals. And we'll talk more about this in just a couple of minutes. What our values are really do matter. And the needs of our kiddos, of our older adults, people who are marginalized, people who have low incomes, those kind of needs, we are thinking about. This tension between the immediate needs and the long-term goals, it's constant. And we try to carefully balance them. And yep, we're data nerds, and we definitely try to build budgets that we can sustain. We come to you very formally in April with the recommended budget, and then again in October with the recommended CIP nation on the forecast. But it's continuous, the budget process. Again, this is what we try to do day in, day out. Every single dollar feels precious to us. And then how do we make the short term and the long term balance out? As you know, by state law, we do not have what the President of the United States has or Congress. We must, by state law, that balance our budget. But we also are thinking about it for the future and not just the immediate fiscal year. Prop 2 and 1/2 is real, especially if you're in an inflationary period. Our city is fueled by the people who worked for us. It's the Lenys and the Rachels and the Greys and the Hatties that make this city go. It's the 2,000-plus people in the Newton Public Schools. It's the police officers and the librarians, and you saw it today, all the DPW and parks and recreations who were out there salting. We try so hard to be fair, make sure they're safe, give them the tools and the equipment and the snowplows that they need to be productive, and make it a place that people actually want to come to work. We will talk about revenue growers and budget busters in the coming minutes. You probably know this, we consciously always budget for 100% of expenses, and we try to budget for 99% of revenues. If you're going to mess up one way or the other, you always want a little extra revenue. Messing up on your expenses and having them be higher is a bad idea. This concept of recurring revenue, recurring expenses, it's so critically important. I'm watching fellow mayors who got lured into the attractive trap. Who was it that Odysseus listened to when he was on the ship? And you said, "The sirens." The sirens. And they ended up using ARPA money for ongoing operating expenses. And oh, are they in trouble right now. Stay financially strong. And the bottom line for all of us in this room is we do it in our personal life. It is true, as leaders of the city. Unfortunately, you got to pick and choose. We can't do it all, so you just end up prioritizing over and over and over again. These goals are all familiar. And they all matter. These are the, I think it's 12. We added a 13 during COVID, the unlucky 13. These are the core things that we try to get done as a city. It's about our students, our infrastructure, serving our older adults, making it work in our neighborhoods, in our village centers, on our commercial corridors. As Adrian said in her introduction, linking us together with art and culture and community, public safety. We never take it for granted that we're safe and that the fire and police and ambulances will show up when we need them. Health, financial health, our open spaces, our parks and recreation spaces. I continue to believe deeply in the reality of climate change and the need to lean in on sustainability. So that's what I think we as a group are trying to do. This is what we're looking at for the next fiscal year, which starts on July 1st. About, was that five months from now? Total revenue, this is not including the enterprise funds, water, sewer, stormwater, add those on. We're just shy of $600 million. So we're six tenths of a billion-dollar operation here, and it's driven heavily, heavily, heavily by our property taxes. 83% of our revenues, which are constrained by Prop 2 and 1/2. They can grow at 2 and 1/2% plus new growth. We'll talk about that. The beauty of that is when you get hit by the pandemic, our revenues were very stable and predictable, unlike other cities who are much more dependent on commercial revenues. We love commercial revenues, except when you hit recessions and pandemic ones. Next slide. Prop 2 and 1/2. We grow at 2 and 1/2% by law, plus new growth. New growth comes heavily from commercial. But also in a place like Newton, somebody adds on a mudroom. We have about 100 homes that are demolished every year. If they rebuild, which they usually do, bigger and more expensive, that's new growth. The major renovations, somebody renovates their kitchen. Our new growth is always, year after year after year, somewhere in that 1% to 2%. So you can count on 2 and 1/2% from Prop 2 and 1/2, plus 1% to 2%, so that gets you to 3 and 1/2. In an amazing year, it's 4 and 1/2% revenue growth. The Somervilles, the Watertowns, the Bostons, the Bluebirds, even the Needoms are adding a lot more growth. So their average new growth is more often than 3% range. We're right in there in that 1% to 2% with the Brooklines, the Belmonts, the Westons, the Navids. So that's our life. I'm going to talk about these. Where does our money come from for the non-property taxes? This is exploding. The others, that 17%? Was it 17%? If you took the 17% that isn't property taxes, this is what it's like. And I might go to the next page and tell you a little bit. We have the awful pandemic with the fabulous ARPA, $63 million. It's all encumbered, being put to use, much of it expended, a little bit more to go. So that so-called revenue source is gone. The no and low-growth category is usually below the other revenues. That's state aid, unrestricted general government aid, otherwise affectionately known as UGA, usually grows at about 2 and 1/2%. Our rooms and meals and cannabis income is below other levels of growth. Parking meters and tickets, we do not use those as cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. We're not out to make money on that stuff. We're just trying to keep the turnover going. The variable growth is weird. We had a particularly good year in excise taxes. Our residents were buying some new cars this last year, or more cars. Building permits, it comes and goes. It depends on what's going on, often with interest rates. Chapter 70, most many of you knows, that's a different form of state aid for the schools. Last year was a pretty good year. The year before was not. Interest income has been unusually good, but interest rates are going down. And we had a bubble. We had the ARPA money that it was great. The Fed sent all $63 million right at the beginning. So that sat, and we expended it over four or five years. So that was earning interest. And Maureen, you can help me out. Was it a year, it was a year ago exactly that we sold bond anticipation notes? So we got $50 million in, that was earning interest for this last year. The bands are gone, ARPA's gone, and interest rates are declining. So that wonderful windfall will be diminishing. I think we're going to have one more good year, the year after following fiscal year, we'll be back to the normal rate. I'm going to read this out loud and a couple more. "We are living in a really changing landscape on the federal level." The first quote was, happens to be Department of Transportation, but every single federal department had the exact same wording. This was what all departments sent out. This was a full week ago, probably nine days ago. "This memorandum sets forth the initial steps to be taken by the U.S. Department of Transportation to identify and eliminate all orders, directives, rules, regulations, notices, guidance documents, funding agreements, programs, and policy statements which reference or relate in any way to climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, racial equity, gender identity, diversity, equity, and inclusion goals, environmental justice, or the Justice 40 Initiative." That's across all federal agencies. Just a few days ago, it got expanded. The Department of Transportation, the new secretary stated that, and this is quote from him, "To the maximum extent permitted by law, the administration will prioritize projects in areas that comply with federal immigration enforcement, prohibit mask and vaccine mandates," and this was news to me, "and have marriage and birth rates higher than the national average."
Nobody gets the word.
This morning, a quote from President Trump was that he has launched a task force, and this is a quote, "to eradicate anti-Christian bias." Yesterday, the new U.S. Attorney General Pam Bondi issued a memo, I'm quoting this. "The Department of Justice will ensure that, consistent with law, sanctuary jurisdictions do not receive access to federal funds from the Department of Justice." And she established a sanctuary cities enforcement working group. So I don't know what happened since this morning. It's a period of time where our team, our city solicitor, we're all watching the memos and the words being used very carefully. I thought it would be helpful, the next slide, Jonathan, to just give you a sense of, for the city of Newton, we have, I would say, relatively limited exposure to direct federal funding, particularly compared to other cities and towns in Massachusetts. I mentioned a couple minutes ago that our overall expenditures are just shy of $600 million. Direct federal funding to the city of Newton are between $11 and $12 million. So it's a very small amount of our total expenses or revenues, depending on how you want to call it. They matter, though. They're very important dollars. Newton Public Schools, they have $5 million between Title I and their IDEA grant. The IDEA grant being most of it. Medicaid reimbursement for our special education, direct services. It surprisingly fluctuates, but it's roughly between $800,000 or 2.2. The state reimburses the school lunch program, but they pass through $1,500,000 from the feds. Our planning department for CDPG home and emergency services grants, that's about $3.5 million annually. Interesting. The fire department gets about $1.5 million of training grants directly from the feds every year. Police, much less, comes directly from the feds, and they're intermittent. The fire are repeated year after year. So that's the exposure. I thought that would be helpful to all of you. We're almost at the end, and then we're on to questions, just to give you a sense. Expenses, remember, balanced budget has to match the revenues. We are projecting this to be $548 million. I did put an asterisk. You know, there are slight things that will change on revenues or expenses before you see it in April, so don't be surprised if the numbers change on the edges. Newton Public Schools is their direct budget is about 53%. In fact, they make up about 65% of our total expenses because a whole bunch of expenses going to our kiddos and students are on the city side. They always move a bit ahead in their budget process because they have to present it to the school committee. So the mayor always provides them with their allocation early in the process. When Jonathan, Maureen, and I in October were doing the financial forecast, we thought the revenues that we could we were looking at revenues, as we refined it in the following three months, we had thought that their allocation would be a 3.5% increase for FY '26. In fact, as we always do, we work really hard on behalf of the students. We've given them a 3.65% increase in their budget allocation for next year. Working with the city council and the school committee in Ananquin, you will remember, we established an MPS stabilization fund. Last year, they dipped into it for additional revenue of $4.1 million. I've also allocated to them the 4, up to, let me talk about the words "up to", up to $4.1 million plus 3.65%. They are working really hard. In fact, the next bullet on the next page will be about this. They've got the same tension. They have to balance the budget, and they've got lots of great ideas of how to support kids and the parent. So it's tension. Altogether, between the allocation and the stabilization fund, this is an additional $10.3 million of additional funding in FY '26 over FY '25 for MPS. Next page. I don't know that I need to go through these one by one. These are the pressure points that we all feel when costs are rising higher. I'll give just one example. Health insurance in October, we had hoped would go up around 5%, which is a pressure point in and of itself, since it's higher than revenue growth. The GIC and MYA, you can ask me what MYA is later, both have established their rates. They're going up about 10% to 14%. We're looking at for the city and schools, it's going to land, we'll know more in the next like 10 days, somewhere, and all of you feel it at home too, 7 and 1/2 to 8% increase in health insurance costs next year. And what's awful is that's a low percent increase compared to what many other organizations and individuals are feeling, but that's scary. So that's just one example. The other thing, we're very transparent about this. We still use free cash to do some operating costs. Some of our road costs, snow and ice, if it's a bad weather year, public safety overtime, some fleet replacements and building maintenance. You see it because the city councillors were coming to you with, sometimes it's fun stuff to fund, and sometimes it's, yep, public safety overtime. So that's not a surprise. With that, the bottom line is, thank goodness, our finances are stable and strong and sustainable. The bad news is it's another, you know, constrained year where our dreams and desires and wants, some would say needs, are higher than what our balanced budget allows. Maureen and Jonathan, what do you want to add just before we open up? Maureen, anything?
No, no, I'm all set. Thank you.
Jonathan, if you want to add. Love to hear, certainly if you can take any questions.
If anyone has any questions on any of the slides quickly before I take this down, did anyone see anything?
Just the free cash estimate. Do we have an idea that's pointed?
Free cash? Stay tuned. No, it's a little too early. It's only early February. So we're still only essentially halfway through our current fiscal year. But it will not be, we have had two bunker years in a row. I think we'll have a strong year, but not a bumper year.
Yeah, and we have, you know, expended a large amount of it already, so.
Of last year. Oh, I was projecting.
Oh, into the fall. There's still free cash to be spent this year.
Yeah, but those are for, I'd say, the more normal things. We reserved, as I call it, last fall's free cash. We expended some with your help, but we reserved for the normal basis of free cash. But let's, again, if I would take it down, we'll put it back up if we need it. But really want to, questions, ideas, recommendations, anything. Councillor Dan will jump on in. Counselor, Dan, jump on in or what you call it.
Skip me something while you're doing.
Yeah. What is, what is the idea grant standard?
Uh, there are two major, the most, there are many grants that we get from the feds that go to the Newton Public Schools. Title One is for low-income children. The idea grant is for children on IEPs or special education.
Okay. And what is the gap between level funding and what we are taking in with the taking into consideration even increases in time?
Um, uh, ask the question one more time.
What's the gap between, we were to level fund everything, let's say, just, just for comparison. Level fund and, uh, you've got inflation and you've got, um, a gap here. But how much approximately would that gap be?
I'm still not sure I understand the question. I apologize, Vicki.
Uh, I, I think I understand your question. I think level funded, well, given the revenue.
Yeah.
And we're, we're looking at in terms of the expenses, this is the mayor outlining.
If we were to do this year the same things that we did next year.
We will be able to do that.
If you just did.
To do that.
Well, if, if you're saying if you inflate, if you inflated some, everything, uh, by to do the same amount of services. I don't know how I would answer that, Maureen.
Depends on the line.
It depends, they're really variable.
Yeah.
Maureen, do you, I'm not sure you heard the question, Maureen. Vicki was asking if we did exactly the same program services output as last year and just took into consideration inflation, how much would that have grown? Um, we do know that line item by line item, but I'm not sure, do, do, do you have any idea how to respond? Maureen on that one?
A percentage, not even a dollar.
Well, see, it really depends. Health insurance going, is going up seven and a half percent. Uh, recycling and trash is gonna go up about six percent. Um, uh, we sign union contracts, they go up three percent on the city side, you know, so, um, I, and Andy, how, how would you try to respond, Maureen?
I, I, I think it's, it's very difficult to, um, because those examples that you gave mayor are exactly right, but then we have other things where our utilities, we enter into contracts that are more, for more than one year. So we're able to hold, um, those fairly flat, except that utilization comes into play. And so as we're opening buildings that are more, um, dependent on electricity, um, we see higher costs there. It's, it's just, it, it's, it's very difficult to just say if we were to hold everything flat, what would happen? We're seeing some stabilization in prices out there in the market in some commodities. Um, and of course, we're still seeing increases in others. The good news is the CPI has, um, uh, normalized a bit, if you will, as compared to a year or two ago, so that certainly is in our favor. So there are just so many different variables and so many things increasing at, at, um, different rates that it's, it's very difficult really to answer that.
But when we get to your committees during the budget process and we get to individual departments, we'll have these discussions, um, regarding individual programs and, and, and in the departmental budgets, so. Um, some will have.
Always looking for how to do things more efficiently and more effectively. So it's not like we're standing still and just um, doing nothing. So I've said, we'll keep that in mind. Um, it looks like maybe we'll go to counselor Baker and then over to counselor Albright. Does that sound good?
So, thank you. Um, I don't know if I can be heard. Can you hear me okay?
Can hear you well.
Good. So, uh, you alluded to the potential impact of the federal government's uh, change in grant policies, and I wasn't clear whether they were marbled into the, uh, school department budget as a potential risk that is going to be, um, guarded against, but there may be others that come to light as the days go on. So I hope that, uh, when you get to the final presentation, presentation, you might be able to at least, um, isolate the known risks, uh, they may not, you know, they may increase. And the other part is that, uh, there are some things where we are, uh, we buy services in a sense of, of, uh, of, of, we have staff and, and people to do them, and then other things where we hire those services, consultants or, or contractors and a variety of things. And I guess part of the long-range contingency planning is to look at that balance. Um, if you're caught short somehow, and I think, hope that that can be illuminated a little bit, so when we get into our budget deliberations inside the committees, we'll have a sense of which is which. Um, that's.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, those are just framing questions.
Good ideas.
And, um, the, uh, the other thing about the, the, the priority of, of transportation funds, again, uh, my guess is Massachusetts is not, um, replacing its, uh, population and, uh, is probably, um, you know, uh, going to be on the short end of whatever federal funds go into renew from the funding cycle. So, again, that's part of the contingency.
Yes, Massachusetts is better than the national average on divorce rate. We have lower divorces than the nationwide average, but yes, um, our young people need to get to work. We are, our birth rate is lower than the national average. So.
We'll point to special committees, city council.
Uh, on birth rates, right, exactly.
I'm afraid Sally and I are beyond the capacity to help much, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it, it is hard to keep track.
Right. So my question was along the same lines as Pastor Baker's. I'm, I'm thinking particularly about the planning department, who I believe the whole housing staff is on CDBG funds.
It's, um, so, um, we are blessed by doing two things. First of all, we have community development block grant home and ESG funds that are just for Newton. But Newton is the lead on something called the Metro West Consortium, which is a group, I think it's sixteen communities, if I remember the exact number, where we're the lead funding agency and the funds come in and we work very democratically with the other fifteen communities and then send those funds back out for similar kind of things. And, um, as the lead agency there, we have employees who are funded by the, that consortium. Uh, I think the CDBG home ESG is about six employees just for that side. Um, there, you will remember a week ago Tuesday, uh, was a really bad day in the United States because on Monday night, all federal funding was in theory frozen. So we were scrambling a lot on Tuesday to understand the landscape. Um, it got unfrozen and or court orders, put it on hold. But the, the, um, the flurry of executive orders and changes continues on a daily basis about lots of things and Massachusetts, I think, uh, will, the question also is how much money flows from the state into the city of Newton. Um, you saw that eighty-three percent of our tax base is property taxes. And there was a slide, we could go back to it if you want, but you'll have it tomorrow. You'll see that state aid is another big chunk and state aid about, um, twenty-five percent of Massachusetts. Massachusetts is about a sixty billion dollar operation. Fifteen billion comes from the feds. So about twenty-five percent of state revenues come from the feds. And how much of those revenues are in jeopardy, which then would impact um, the state aid that comes to a place like the city of Newton.
So it could, could it, could it possibly be that if Newton is one of the sanctuary cities that doesn't receive money, that some other of the sixteen consortium cities and towns has to become the lead agency instead of us?
Uh, we've got lots of things to consider.
That's, I'm just putting that out there, that, that could really happen.
There's lots of things to consider.
Yeah.
I'm gonna suggest that anything to do with sanctuary city or DEI, we just rename as government efficiency working.
I, I, I welcome these innovative ideas and, um, it is true that we can, uh, move forward with really good things using different language sometimes. Um, climate change and greenhouse gas emissions are words that are verboten, but energy efficiency is a positive, are positive words, for example. So I think we will be thoughtful about our grant applications.
Actually, I did have a question too. I know that we've invested a lot of, of, of effort into solar. And as a matter of fact, I understand we have the highest amount of solar than any other community in Massachusetts. Is that correct?
I think actually it isn't, as it turns out. We thought we were, and, but we have, it depends on how you.
We, we might, yes, yes. We're not giving up that title.
Well, we, we don't wanna do misinformation, but we're.
Yeah. But I guess what I'm asking is, all those investments in terms of, is that gonna be able to reduce some of our, our costs, our running our buildings and our schools? Um, because we're producing so much of our electricity.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the, the beauty of solar is it does two really good things simultaneously. It can lower costs as well as be greener, so, um, and it's good, we were first movers on that and, um, but there's more that we're trying to do and can we do what we had hoped to do in the next four years? It may be more constrained than we had planned or hoped.
Okay. We, we're also, um, building much, many, much more efficient buildings than take, you know, that are costless to run.
Those are good. The problem though is we are expanding, um, air conditioning because of dare I say, climate change is making it hotter in June and September when kids are in school.
Sometimes.
So, yeah.
I was just wondering, we, it's sometimes, when you look at all the sort of little things that come together, they can end up being larger savings. And I think there's still opportunities for us to.
Yep, and then we're all looking at electricity costs and, um, it, 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 it's a Rubik's cube. Yeah. Yeah.
No, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Uh, quick question, uh, Mayor, we have a new, or a center, Cooper Center is coming online, which is great. I, I'm sure there's gonna be extra costs associated with it. This is a larger facility, more programming. What's the estimate of how much that's gonna increase?
Uh, we'll, we'll stay very close to all of you. We're really in the thick of it about how to staff. Um, we want to open with lots of wonderful programs for lots of hours and lots of days. Um, and then, yes, there's the running of the building itself. Um, that is oddly enough easier to estimate, um, but stay tuned. Uh, we're still in process, working, um, heavily with Danielle Murray and her team at older, older adult services, as well as parks, recreation and culture and other departments who can all imagine fabulous things happening for the community seven days a week.
Thank you. So on my priority list, and I'm sure we'll go around and do more of this, but I'll just put my three out there. I have school, safety and sustainability. Schools being, thank you. Sounds like your eyes on that same goal and, you know.
Yeah.
Sustainably increasing, uh, budget to meet needs. Um, on, uh, safety, of course, I'm always interested in traffic calming. Um, and, and at least putting in the same amount of traffic calming, if not same line, uh, amount of money, um, every year. But, um, also, uh, was, was reading, um, Council Grossman's excellent report, um, from public safety the other week on, um, the police department and how important the social worker is, and if there is, I'd love for us to think about and possibly increase the number of social workers. They're cheaper than officers and do a lot of preventive stuff and, they didn't, you know, Chief McMahon did talk about wanting and needing social workers more hours in the day than what they ever do. Um, so that's one, and under sustainability, um, I'd like to be able to do uh, reporting of smaller buildings than twenty thousand square feet. That would mean some staff time allocated to putting some of that information um, from whatever reporting we get into, um, the assessor's database or somewhere else where people can access it. Um, and I'm hoping that is possible. It's also a marginal cost for attacking the biggest source of um, emissions in the city. Um, and I think we could manage our parking better for both business sustainability and for our, our own, it's not a huge number, but it would, you know, help with, uh, some of our revenues to, to look at parking as pricing as a tool. It may also get a little less your money. Um, the main complaint I was reading about parking in both Newtonville and in the centers around Saturday when we don't enforce.
Oh, we enforce on Saturdays.
The, um, but it's, it, you know, so it's around things like that, just sort of looking at that whole follow-up. Figuring out how to get people to go where you want them to go, so.
I'm grateful for the, that feedback's very helpful. Jonathan is taking really good notes. Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Council Grossman.
Um, so first a question and then two.
Yeah.
The question is, uh, refers to the uh, stabilization fund that you talked about and reminded us about in your slides for MPS and the contract that we agreed to, uh, and the very clear knowledge you have going into that we're gonna have that in the future between what we're gonna have to pay and how will, what our natural trajectory would be. Where are we in perspective at? Have you made progress in figuring out how to attack that? Where in time do you currently see that coming?
So, um, um, Becky was rightfully asking about a really important question. Um, together, a year ago, we created an MPS stabilization fund, I believe, and Maureen will help me out. That we started with twenty-two million dollars, largely coming from a one-time settlement with EverSource. Um, knowing that we've got a really interesting period here where we're doing something exciting, important work, which is attacking, uh, our unfunded liabilities for pensions. Um, the, the tricky part is getting to fiscal year thirty-three or halfway through fiscal year thirty-two when if the stock market gods don't play a trick on us, and they sometimes do, we should have that fully funded and we'll actually have funds to repurpose at that time because, uh, as we turn over to doing our retired healthcare or OPEB costs, we'll be able to have some extra funds. We need to get from, we're just about to head into FY twenty-six. And we've gotta get through F Y thirty-two, the N P S stabilization fund. Is there to provide more money to support our students. Uh, you will recall that I came to all of you this fall and you were. You thankfully agreed, we put an additional two million dollars into the stabilization fund from free cash. Plus, we've been earning interest on the fund. There is still a gap between. When uh N P S could potentially. Finish up using the stabilization fund, let's say in F Y twenty-nine thirty. And you can have a couple of years there where the the roughly four million dollars wouldn't be there. And that's a big deal to N P S. Um, so I think all of us will have to continue to work on that. I know, for example. Uh, school committee chair Bresky is thinking. Let's not, for example, this coming year, use the full four point one million plus the three point six five percent increase. I've got those dollars written down somewhere on this page. Uh, could we use less so that we extend it out and don't face pressure in the out years? I think we're all gonna be working on that. The immediate needs of our immediate kids are so real. That you really wanna lean in. Um, and yet we have to be very thoughtful about getting to F Y thirty-three. So there will be this ongoing tension for each year going forward. Um, and it will pull at our heartstrings because you kind of, you look at these kids and you really wanna. Do as much as you can for that first grader or that eighth grader or that tenth grader. Um, as you know, that's the only year they're a first grader or an eighth grader or a tenth grader, so. Um. We'll all be working it through.
And two, my two comments are sort of building on a theme. The next one uh goes to another heart-wrenching tension we talk about every year. Which is how many school buildings we still have to address. And you mentioned the interest in the city that are ninety. And and the elementary school issue is kind of the front and center one, but we all know that. We have other school buildings that are not at the elementary level that need care and investment as well. And at some point after the explosion of the last attempt of the Ward Underwood. Very painful and unpleasant memory um that I was intimately involved in. We had sort of an impression from. I guess Dr. Nolan, but sort of out there that a kind of new plan was gonna need to be formulated. About what we're gonna be doing. Um, and it it just is, it's just, I'm constantly reminded. And that we really have in an inequitable situation going on in. These buildings and what some of our students and our teachers and faculty have access to and. So this poses a comment that remains the very top priority for me. I know it's, I know it's not lost on anybody, but I feel it is. So that's I'm wondering what, where you think we're at.
I think you spoke beautifully, um, and I. Uh, lift up everything you said. I think the challenges are high. The emotions understandably will be high and the answers are not easy or clear. So you've got a, and it involves children and neighborhoods, so it it it's. It's a tough one. I would say a couple of things. We as a community have to lean into this. I would not ignore it. Um, do our best to do it as thoughtfully and civilly and robustly as possible. So. Move forward, Newton. Let me uh keep going. I'd say a couple of things. Um, oddly enough, I think the pressure point oddly enough is school construction. If you have. Two s- small schools and you combine them into one school, you actually don't save that much money in. You you don't close schools to for economic reasons. I think you close schools or combine schools, I think is a better reason. Just because the cost of building the new schools is just gigantic and inflation has really hurt it. So you've got the cost of the new building and the other thing to think through is. Neighborhood schools anchor the neighbors, neighborhood and are a beautiful thing. Giving that up and having fewer neighborhood schools. Really hurts our sense of place and neighborhoods. Um, but we also, when we have declining enrollment in some schools. Where you only have one classroom in a grade, we know that isn't good for the kiddos. So it just is not a good educational system. Our kids need enough other classmates to have some mix, you know, year to year. And um. Our school systems now, as they should, really work with support staff. Whether it's um extra help in math or social emotional help or. So that you need enough kids in the building so that those ancillary important support services. Can work and you don't have a librarian going from halftime at one school building to halftime in another. So it's it's, this is not gonna be easy. Um. It involves school committee and city council and mayor. There's educational goals and financial intersection. Um, and usually in all the cities and towns that end up doing this, it's always hateful. I've never seen one or heard about one where people say. Oh, great, we're gonna combine these two schools. It's always terribly upsetting. Um, but we've gotta take it on, we've gotta think it through, see what is best for our children. Uh, and just keep leaning in on what's good for the kids. Um, keep that as our, you know, shining thing and um. We've got great teachers, great leadership at N P S who have a lot of ideas and thoughts. Um, uh, Anna Nolan's taking this very seriously. Um, so. We'll 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 just lean in. Jonathan, former school committee member, and you might wanna add. Susan Albright might wanna add, former school committee.
Susan, Mark and I, I think I'm in my twenty-ninth year of working on this topic. Um, Susan goes a little further back from that. Mark's about where I am.
We're about the same.
We're about the same, so um, we all, three of us have been through this uh history. And we still have ways, we still have a long ways to go. We have four schools under construction, soon to be under construction. Um, getting bids over the next several months on, you know, countryside and and horse man Franklin.
We got great bids on countryside.
I was gonna let you say that.
Well, it'll come out, but please know, um, we just got some great news on countryside bids this week. Well, it'll get out once we.
Mr. Morse has been doing um an amazing job, amazing job. So that's great news. Um. We will definitely need debt service overrides to continue to pay for these kinds of projects.
There's no way.
And hopefully get M S B A help wherever we can. Um, you know, the school out of, coming out of that, the Ward Underwood situation. The school committee did undertake a study. They've come up with a priority list of elementary schools to be worked on. Certainly Warden Underwood at the top of the list, top two, uh followed um by, you know, Pearson Mason Rice. Um, so there is a list. The school committee really needs to. And I'll look at the school committee here, which needs to take the next steps about thinking with the school administration. About how to move forward and what their priorities are. And work then with the city administration, whether this administration or the next one. Um, to move that forward. And we do have a long ways to go, and it's not just the elementary schools. Uh, we have middle schools that need, that would need, eventually will need work as well, so.
In high school.
Yeah, and and eventually in, yeah, so. Anyways.
It's just, it'll be plain old hard and we've gotta do it.
Well, and I and I got part of coming out of this working group, what. Uh, what I found really difficult too was it was unclear to me with where the decision-making was going to come from. And I remember the school committee sort of went back and started talking about the plan, so I'm. I'm glad it started with them. I mean, I said.
They need to move the ball forward if.
Yeah, I mean, it starts with the educational program and and what the kids need and certainly, you know, Josh Morse has educated me on that. Over the years, you know, that's what drives the decisions. I. I suppose I'm just enthusiastic about seeing the plan develop and become, you know, sort of clearer and hopefully something that we can stick to or doesn't. I obviously, I know things change over time, but there's just been so much shifting and changing, so.
Yeah, I mean, as crazy as it may sound, with everything that Josh is working on right now, he's, he is ready to get started on another project. If and when, if and when the school committee, yeah, so.
Uh, and then the final point that I will make, uh, which also help on this topic is that in the last few weeks. I've had the occasion to talk with some parents of reflections program students um. At Williams, who's been there over the last few years. And they've raised some really important and legitimate concerns about. Uh, the playground structure and accessibility for their children. And it's led me to have a few conversations among them with Commissioner Banks and and others. And um, in addition to just wanting to advocate for those families and families. The broader point that it reminded me was that our budget to take care of all of our playgrounds, hand courts and the whole city area, there's hundred fifty thousand. Right?
But we often use free cash. Don't stop writing budget and um additional.
Right, and and as I was sort of.
And we used our funds as well.
We used our funds as well.
And so obviously there are different, you know, pockets where money has come from. It's it's obviously very hard to explain to these parents, you know, where like, well, there's money, but there's not, you know? There's arc of money, but the budget's this.
I I'll just also add, we take our lead from the schools.
Yeah.
So the schools. Come to us and say, here's our priority list for playgrounds, indoor facilities, outdoor facilities. And tell us, so um, the Williams folks. Need to advocate to N P S.
This wasn't even on the top twenty.
And we feel, you know, I've I've. I've I've certainly shared that message with them that. And and I understand that even when the reflections program started at Williams, that there may have been disagreement. Between educators and parents about how the playground is structured.
There there are different points of view. Welcome to New.
And we and we did get a grant, but we did.
We have sixty-some odd playground facilities and some countless number of quarters beyond that. And a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget over time, it's just not even getting to scratch the surface of what is needed. I mean, literally talking about the surface, you know, Commissioner Banks was telling me, usually spend that money on surfacing, you know, underneath. Um, the Newton Center Playground, for example, we had holes that we needed to come up with a new start. So I'm just raising it because to me.
Perfectly legit.
Yeah, you know, I think even our lieutenant governor was talking about how, what happens on the local level. On that moment you're gonna have at that that playground, that field, and I just. I know, I know it's an insoluble problem.
It isn't insoluble. We are spending a record amount of money on recreation facilities. As we speak, and you are still right that it's, we should not, could, should, would love to spend more.
Can can I just say one?
It's all true.
Two is, you know, we have with the four new schools, uh, we're gonna have four new beautiful, unbelievable, accessible playgrounds. And those schools will have capacity for different kinds of programs. If there are programs that need. To move or they need uh different types of facilities. That that we gave elbow room in 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 pretty much all four of these buildings. For programming uh to to move around and to to accommodate the right facility, so something to think about.
So, and yet you're still right.
And you're still right.
Um, Tariq, a little, and then we'll circle back to those.
Yeah.
Jump in.
I also just wanna point out that also.
Oh, thank you. Uh, we'll go to you after Tariq Randy. Sorry about that. Thank you.
All right, so while we're on the topic of schools and it was on the slide up there. Um, school lunches and you said that was a potential uh problem with federal funding. Uh, potentially being cut, I think that's, no?
Um, no and yes. What has happened is during the pandemic, the state. Um, expanded their commitment to providing free lunches. For all students regardless of income. And uh, the Healy administration doubled down on that. I think it's now a year ago. So the state has fully committed to fully funding. All the meals for all our children everywhere, all the time. Um, again, the federal funding has helped the state because it's that much less. But um, there wasn't an asterix on the state funding that about. It was just that all kids would have free lunches. So um, uh, the good news for Newton probably is that the state would have to backstop. Any funding loss from the feds? But so there's a lot of unknowns, but yes, the the federal funding to Newton actually flows through the state. To us, but it is federal money.
A million and a half of federal and about two and a half million of state. So, and the federal money, I, you know, has been around for decades. The federal food and lunch program is, it goes back to the, I don't know, sixties or something. So, um, I I don't know, that that employs a lot of farmers. I'm not sure if they're gonna get rid of it.
Yeah, I know, uh, just, well, you don't know, si- sitting here right now, but do you have an idea when we will know?
So I I would say your crystal ball is probably as fuzzy as mine. I'm just guessing, but if yours is clearer, let me know. Um, you know, I think we're trying to. Watch this very carefully. The Massachusetts Municipal Association is watching it carefully. The U S Conference of Mayors is watching it carefully. The National League of Cities is watching it carefully. My inbox is filled daily with, you know, alert, alert, alert. Um, the state, the Desi is watching it carefully. Um, so. Um, it won't slip by us, but I, you've seen just in the last week and a half, something is said. And then it's changed and then changed again. And sometimes it gets better, sometimes it then gets worse, you know, from my perspective, so. It it's worth, we're gonna just have to stay calm and thoughtful. And go with this wildness thing. Um, oh, uh, Councilor Block, sorry about that.
Um, that's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to get back for a moment to. Council Grossman's mention of the reflections program at Williams, which I've become quite familiar with. My understanding that's a relatively new program at Williams, I think maybe.
Couple years old.
Couple couple of years old. Um, and. Um, because the the ground maintenance is the responsibility of the. Um, because the, the ground maintenance is the responsibility of the Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee. While the land itself may be owned by the school committee. This sort of overlapping responsibilities, um, can create confusion. Um, between the departments, between the public, sort of who's on first. Um, and I would just ask that in the course of your budget process, when there is overlapping responsibility. That somebody be there to make sure that all the parties are talking to each other. And if you're expecting the school to prioritize and the school is expecting Parks and Recreation and Culture to prioritize. That, that they at least, um, jointly figure out what their priorities are and they could be different, so I don't. Um, I don't envy trying to sort that out, but it's, it's sort of a, um. When you get these overlapping responsibilities, it, 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 it can, things can get lost in the cracks pretty easily. Um, and I, and I know that the Williams PTO and the, certainly the Parents of Reflection students. Are, are very upset about what they see is inadequate. Um, access to recreation for these disabled students, so their, their, their disability issues layered on top. Of all this other, so, um, please, um, take a little special look, not just at, at that situation. But any situation in which you've got overlapping responsibilities. Um, I, I, I wanted to sort of ask generally a process question, I'm, I'm guessing, but tell me if this is true. That during this budget process, you're expecting department heads to make proposals to you. As to what they need next year to operate their departments. Uh, and or to expand their departments if that's what they wanna do and maybe that's what you would wanna do. Is that generally how you kind of orchestrate this, this process?
Um, so, a couple of different things, first of all, in your first comment, uh, everything you said rings true when you have overlapping. Um, jurisdictions, but we have that, a ton of that throughout the city, it is. And, uh, the close relationship between Parks Rec and Culture. And the schools has been there forever and ever and ever, and yes, having really. Open lines of communication, which I think thankfully we do, um. Most of the time, we occasionally definitely drop the ball and I think it can be very opaque for parents. Or caregivers in particular, um, and by the way, different people have different ideas. So that a principal may have a different idea from a teacher, which is different from a, the PTO, which is different from a parent, which is different. From the Parks Commissioner, which is different, et cetera, so, the, there is, there is complexity, so everything you said rings true. And we just have to keep leaning into, onto it and, and do the best we can, certainly that communication and decision making. And clarity, um, so we, we do budgeting in lots of different ways. Um, we do it from bottom up, we, uh, in essence. Do a version of zero, zero based budgeting, which is, we look at every single line item. The departments do and Maureen and her team do, Jonathan does. Uh, so we don't just say, yep. Uh, keep that thousand dollars and we literally go down to the penny, so we review, double check. We are looking and departments are looking for ways to do things better that cost less. Sometimes that means bringing in-house something that we've subcontracted out. Sometimes it's subcontracting out something we've been doing in-house. We're always asking, do we need to keep doing this, is this really a valuable, useful service? Or at that level, is it, um, department heads are constantly encouraged to say. What are the important things that you feel either you're missing the mark on? Or that are new and different, that we've got new needs, new ways of doing things. So it's a whole mix of discussions and we do it year round. We, we don't say, wait till January to come in and talk to us about a good idea. We're, we're changing operations, um, all along during the year, um. Uh, Maureen and Jonathan, what would you add? So it's, yes, what you described and so much more.
Well, the, the question was sort of a prelude to the city clerk's budget. Um, that's something which we in the council have discussed, uh, both in our meetings as well as with the city clerk. And she's got all sorts of proposals regarding, um, the functions that she's responsible for. Um, and because it, that office, those functions interact so closely with the city council. I'm wondering how we as a council can play more of a role in the discussions regarding that office. Is that something that you've thought about, what's, um, how does that play into? Um, again, I'm thinking particularly of the city clerk's office.
I think of just today, Maureen, Jeff and I were saying it's time to sit down with City Council President. Laredo and Vice President Kales in the next little bit. Um, uh, to talk through some of the, the, uh, questions about the clerk's office, so we look forward to. Um, working with your leadership in particular on, uh, questions and ideas and thoughts about the clerk's office.
Can I just add, Mayor, the, the council block and any colleagues, please feel free to reach out directly to. Vice President Kales and myself with ideas, I think we all recognize of the important functions that the clerk's office does. We have and continue to talk to Clark more about where she might use resources differently or. Perhaps need additional resources, understanding the constraints of the budget, I'm very realistic about that, but if there's suggestions, please, please communicate directly with us.
But if I could add as well, that the city clerk, like all the departments, um, in, in, in city government. Do meet with us in detail about their budgets, so, um, we've already met with Carol several times, um, about the budget. She's also been working with the, um, HR department, um, on some of these issues very carefully, so I, I. I think probably more so than almost any other department, uh, this year, we've been, um, in heavy discussions with her about. Um, a, a range of, of issues, um, and staffing, so, um. There's lots going on and, you know, we'll be having those discussions with council leadership sometime soon.
Thank you very much, wonderful to hear.
About it, let's go, and do you mind, Josh, uh, Counselor Crinspect?
Thank you, and appreciate the presentation. Uh, the next few months, hold a lot of, um, there's a, a broad range of things that could happen. Um, you alluded to some of it with the funding of revenues and, um, actually being so dependent on local property taxes, which. We just relatively see. The federal government. Um, probably March, maybe April, will be wrestling with extending the tax cuts to do that, they're gonna do all sorts of.
March fourteenth is a very big date, everybody, keep that on your calendar. The continuing resolution on the current year budget expires March fourteenth.
Um, but one of the things is, is, most people probably know, they're looking at things like for capital caps and Medicaid, block grants and banking. Certain things that would significantly constrain state revenues, as you mentioned, and sort of trickle down, um. At the state level, we often see joint resolution between the House and Senate to give us an education package, I mean. Of, of, you know, what the municipalities can count on. I don't know that we're gonna get that, it'd be difficult for the state to do that, I don't know, I think the governor putting in her budget, the whole funding of the school lunches. Uh, is an indication that, you know, I don't see the House and Senate moving that, I think that's something probably, probably count. I'm asking all this because, um, two of my main concerns, which are the, my priorities, are roads and deals. And there are a lot of, um, state programs that all feels funding, Chapter ninety obviously is a big one for the roads. My question after all that, I apologize for the wrong, I think I'm quite, as you posed the budget. Can you also, back to sort of the point where it comes to Baker's making, find an indication of how varied or, or the range. Of Harold, which things are sort of, I assume you're gonna sort of pose that everything's okay. That we know, but you know, nothing has been deeply cut into all those, uh, potential sources that are gonna cut into us. We'll assume that everything's okay, but with an understanding that these are the things at risk and this is how much is at risk. Um, through those different mechanisms and potentially what we do if, can we go to President Harold?
Um. The good news is unfortunately, Maureen, Jonathan and I went through this. In twenty twenty, we had just finished preparing the budget to present to all of you. When you will remember in mid-March, um, the pandemic broke out. And we literally scrapped that budget and had to prepare another one with less revenue. Um, so we've got that muscle memory. And, um, you and Counselor Baker and others, I think Counselor Albright referred to it, maybe Counselor Laredo. Others are right that this is a really peculiar year. And we will deliver you a budget, you have forty-five days to approve it and, you know, uh, but. Uh, we will build into the budget enough conservativeism. And also ways to, um. Expend the funds in a way that if things go sour or south. Let's say after we've started the fiscal year, and that happens, by the way, when there's a severe recession. Or something, things can change in the course of a fiscal year. And we have to reimagine spending along the way, we will certainly be planning for that. I'll give you the bad news though, one of the easiest budgets to cut back on is roads. That's contractor services and it's one of the easiest ones to say. Rather than spending ten million dollars this year, halfway through the year, we're going to only spend. And we would obviously be very clear with all of you and what, what we're doing and why. Um, uh, that's one of the very easiest and. Uh, is painful, but less painful than some of the other budgets that are more directly human. Um, being related, um, so we will stay very close to you, all of us are gonna be living this together. Um, and, um, finding a way forward that does the best by the people who live and work here that we can. Yeah, not an easy time. Yeah, uncertainty is tough. And there's lots of it, and it's real uncertainty, it's not even imaginary, yeah.
First thing, Counselor Grossman, raising the schools because that was on my list as well. But I'm, I'm thinking a lot about the revenue side of things and, um. You know, it came up earlier in the, in the year, maybe it was in the spring about economic development and how we only have one person in planning who. Is focused primarily on economic development, which, but that leads me to the bigger issue. And I was thinking of the slide you showed us about how we compared the Somerville and Cambridge and Watertown is on the list now. But Watertown wasn't always on the list, they had a major renaissance of housing, mixed use. A major and, and commercial, and commercial over the last, over the last five years, let's say, maybe a little bit longer. Which has put them in that position, and I know we have an Economic Development Commission, but they don't. I, we, we hardly hear from them, I don't know what they talk about, I, I, maybe I should go to their meetings, but. It feels to me like we need a focus on economic development in, you know, what is it that we need? What kind of a mix is it, I think we, we all love Newton exactly the way it is, we wanna preserve the status quo. But in order to really increase our revenue, we may not be able to keep the status quo exactly as it is, we may. Wanna do some things like what Watertown did, um, what other cities have done, do we need, uh, um. I don't know, a Blue Ribbon Commission, or do we, or does the Economic Development Commission just need to be, have a bigger focus? Help us think about, how can we increase the pie?
So, um, you may not be aware, working with the Economic Development Commission, we are updating. And redoing our economic development plan as we speak.
We have state.
So, uh, we've got state grant, so that's underway, cause I agree with you, we have to keep. Um, on top of this and imagining, uh, this, I listened in a little bit to the Northland. Discussion that was at Land Use the other night, um, and all of us, you know, as a Riverside. Or, uh, Northland shift to housing and away from commercial because of current market conditions. Um, that does impact that chart that we were looking at for new growth, um, in a permanent way. Um, so I agree, we are a fully built out city, so this is a. These are redevelopments for the most part, and the city council has a very important role. Um, uh, you all are the decision makers, um. On these major projects as well as the smaller ones, so all of us paying close attention to it. Um, is important and good and we agreed with you, so we are moving forward with, um. An economic development plan right now.
So I, I hope that you will involve, you know, we do have a land use committee that does, that makes decisions and is. As Mr. Slessen just said last, last, I think it was last night, it was Tuesday night, I guess it was, for Northland, he said. It, you know, the, the same time heals all wounds, he said, time wounds all deals. And, and, um, that's the phrase for business community. And we have a role to play as a council in the economic development of Newton. So I think we need to participate in the, in the plan that you're gonna put together, you, you need to have some counselors who. Help you think it through, because we need to understand our role in all of this.
So, you're, you're part of the, uh, stakeholder groups that are, will be part of it.
So the earlier the better and the.
And by the way, I will, um, I encourage all of you to get to know the members of the Economic Development Commission. They are, um, a thoughtful, great group who are looking deeply and seriously. And rigorously at these questions, so, um, the closer you can be to them, right? Um, over to Counselor Larry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to sort of follow up on Susan's comments because I do think that is so important. And it is unbelievable what Watertown has done, I mean, fifteen years ago was completely different story. But the other thing is that we've had efforts to do, um, dive into some of the, these questions about. Uh, growing our commercial development and such, and there's a number of things we, that have started in Onandom. That really, I haven't really, there seems to be, I don't know, they haven't really gone anywhere. So, um, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of manufacturing in Onandom, um. We, um, passed a new zoning ordinance for breweries, uh, more than a year ago in, in Zapp. Um, there's a, there was a potential for lab space on California Street that never went anywhere. Um, we have a new manufacturing district on California Street that I haven't heard anything. Um, we have a new manufacturing district on California Street that I haven't heard anything new about. We have a um struggling business right uh next to Riverdale that's sort of an interesting mix of of space because they they're working for like with contractors, and it's partially, you know, maybe it was an awkward, things maybe didn't go smoothly smoothly there, but that hasn't gone anywhere. Um, so you know, we we're making this effort to a degree, but then um there's if we never seem to get get to get to the end, get figure out, actually have like a a business that has been been successful there. And there's large swaths of Nantum that are basically underutilized surface parking lots as well, um, which we we talked about using those instead of having our Village Center, Overlake District, using those areas to build housing. So these are just just something, these are just all in like a one-mile area that that um I've I've been thinking about and just throwing it out there that, I mean, I don't have an answer to it, but.
So um, everything you say rings true and is correct. I'd say there's a bunch of different things going on. The lab market is oversaturated now in a way it, no, it may have been good we missed it because there's a lot of empty lab spaces right now. So if they were built five years ago, don't assume that would have been good for Newton. So I I read Brett Remin's thing this morning also, but um uh, it it's um, we probably had to build them ten years ago, not five. They'd be empty right now, possibly.
Didn't we in zoning and planning? I do remember our um us doing a zoning change to encourage lab space, and that probably was ten years, close to ten years ago.
I would also just remind us that within our location, we are a really expensive land here in Newton. So it's um, uh, to have the brewery open, have them invest and open in with our land costs is really challenging. Um, so we've got real strengths by being so strong and attractive and real Newtonism. Um, this is not easy, but yes, we should be leaning in and trying to attract as many of these things. But um I have made, continued the policy of all other mayors, which is I do not give tax breaks to businesses to open here. That's sometimes how these things happen. I've never felt that was in Newton's financial self-interest. Um, it does mean that the highest and best, most profitable use is often housing, which is not necessarily, uh, we do need housing. Don't don't get me wrong. We need housing at lots of different price points and different types. But um, like many of you, um, encouraging the commercial sector um is very important to me as well. So um, this is, we'll keep leaning in and trying to make this an attractive place to do business. Uh, the special permit granting process is not easy here in Newton. Um. Don't know that we're ready to change that, but it isn't easy and um and it's done by elected officials, not by a planning board or uh what's the new name for the Boston redevelopment? To.
Boston Planning Agency.
The Boston, like, you know, we have our special, unique Newton thing, and it's not easy. Um, it often ends up in really great results, but it's usually a bit slow. And um understandably, we ask a lot when people come in to develop. We do, you know, and 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 lots of good stuff. We want these buildings to be sustainable. We want them to have open space. We want them to be attractive and in your scale for the neighbors, you know, we 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 if we are understandably demanding, yes.
Uh, anything else, folks?
I'll just make a quick pitch, as I always do, as much as we can use the traffic calming, the traffic calming, the other one of the top issues I give me is one.
Truly, I thought you were gonna say trees.
Uh, I think Mark, I don't know if he's quite even filled with all the.
Trees are a traffic.
Total positions, but they are. This is true. One of the reasons I think to see uh more curb cuts, because every additional curb cut is a most places in the country and slow traffic by five miles per hour, whatever it is.
But so if you think of something tomorrow, we're right here, reach out to me or Maureen or Jonathan or just um tickle us, not literally, but get us a tickle and say, I need five more minutes. Um, we do a quick call or send us an email and I'm happy to get ideas. But I would say do it in the next couple of weeks, because we're beginning to um get solidify um right around the beginning of March. Our degrees of freedom get more harder.
Um, on behalf of the council, Mayor Fuller and uh Mr. Yeo and Ms. Lemieux, thank you so much for being here tonight, but thank you for taking the time to talk with us and engaging in this very candid conversation. Uh, and I'm sure you'll be here for my, uh.
I hope so.
Multiple occasions regularly. So uh with that, folks, we're adjourned for the evening. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.